I've got a short combo, I gotta go on the change.
What?
I dropped five trees over at my house.
I mean, it happens here, turn around and I'll back in the street.
Yeah, I'll read it.
No, that's a soft time.
That's right, I can write on them. Okay, I'll have to go over here. Oh, they're posting them. I don't need any. No, I did not. I'm a little behind.
And we probably went back.
Yeah, I just probably went back. Steve won't be here tonight.
Oh, thank you, you're really supposed to.
Yeah. Okay, well, CDV needs to change this one.
I was thinking, I think we'll be okay.
Maybe we should grab a level.
Yeah, the lower side is a little bit.
If I don't look at a lot of them either.
Those are.
That means Iowa State colors.
Ouch.
Oh, I still have five minutes.
They seem to be.
Okay. I have a big one for future.
They're just thinking if they do it right, next year. And we think I'll just move.
That's true.
Just having confused the three.
That would be nice.
Well, that should be a goal.
Yeah.
There you go, not any families.
That sounds up to be a reminder. You wanna swap, I get green. Yeah, there's the pole, that's what I had in the back.
I remember seeing that before.
That I had in the back.
That's aggressive.
I knew there was something.
Seven o'clock, let's call the meeting order. Roll call, please, Ronnie.
Um, Zook, Murrow.
Here.
Hoover.
Here.
Waller.
Yes.
Roberts.
Here.
Mayor Brad.
Here.
So you stand for the pledge of allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you.
Is there a motion to approve the tentative agenda?
Some move.
Second.
Moved in second, we approve the tentative agenda. Any discussion? Roll call.
Roberts.
Yes.
Waller.
Yes.
Hoover.
Yes.
Murrow.
Yes.
Is there a motion to approve our consent agenda?
Some move.
Second.
Moved in second, we approve the consent agenda. Any discussion? Roll call.
Hoover.
Yes.
Murrow.
Yes.
Waller.
Yes.
Roberts.
Yes.
Anyone in the audience like to address the council about anything right now? Okay, moving on. Is there a motion to hire a full-time police officer and to approve his rate of pay?
Some move.
Second.
Moved in second, that we hired a new police officer and approved his pay. Any other discussion? Roll call.
Waller.
Yes.
Roberts.
Yes.
Murrow.
Yes.
Hoover.
Yeah.
Chief.
Great.
Aye, Benjamin Scott.
Aye, Benjamin Scott.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the state of Iowa.
And the Constitution of the state of Iowa.
And the ordinances of the city of Mitchellville, Iowa.
And the ordinances of the city of Mitchellville, Iowa.
And that I will faithfully.
Now faithfully.
And impartially.
And impartially.
To the best of my ability.
To the best of my ability.
Discharge all the duties of police officer.
Discharge all the duties of police officer.
In the city of Mitchellville, Iowa.
In the city of Mitchellville, Iowa.
As now.
As now.
Or hereafter required by law.
Or hereafter required by law.
Congratulations.
Thank you.
Welcome aboard. Did you make any comments?
She doesn't like putting them on the spot.
I appreciate all the guys.
I had a chance to do that once on.
Appreciate your opportunity.
We're glad to have you on board.
Thank you.
Welcome.
And I'm sure the chief is glad. Yes. All right, um, is there a motion to approve the resolution adopting our health reimbursement arrangement plan?
Some move.
One second.
Moved in second, that we adopt our health reimbursement arrangement plan. Any other discussion? Roll call.
Murrow.
Yes.
Hoover.
Yes.
Waller.
Yes.
Roberts.
Yes.
Is there a motion to approve the lift station and sanitary sewer project easement?
Some move.
Second.
Moved in second, any discussion? Any suggestions? Understand that.
Good pictures.
They actually got out of the swamp pretty much today. So, all right, roll call.
Hoover.
Yes.
Waller.
Yes.
Murrow.
Yes.
Roberts.
Yes.
Next item is the second reading of amendment our parking ordinance to add residential vehicle regulations. Is there a motion to approve?
Second.
Moved in second, any discussion? Roll call.
Waller.
Yes.
Hoover.
Yes.
Murrow.
Yes.
Roberts.
Yes.
Okay. Repeat your planning. You're on hand.
Wow, you guys just sped through all that. All right. Um, I gave you in your packet a list of four different types of goals that I want you guys to have in mind. As you know, October 1st is when I start looking at budget for the next eighteen months. So I kinda need to know a direction. Um, but that is, this is just the starting point. So you have immediate goals, those are goals we want to finish now through the end of this fiscal year, which would end June 30th of this year. Um, short-term goals would be goals that you want in the budget for next year going through June of 2023. And it sounds a long ways off, but it's not that long ways off. Um, long-term goals would be goals for the next five years. So think fiscal 2027 and beyond, that's kind of five years. Future dreams, what do you guys want to see in six, seven, eight, ten, fifteen years? What should we start planning for now? It is really hard to plan for a whole new construction park project on Center Avenue from one end of town to the other, because that's, you know, one of three million dollar projects with one year's notice. So we, I want kind of a vision of what you guys would like to see in the town in ten to fifteen years so we can start setting some things up, getting some things in place sooner and better than later. So if you guys have anything in mind, you know how this works. You can go put your little sticky notes up there in the category you want, or you guys can tell me and I'll write them up there, and then you can put your sticky notes up on what is the most important.
Let me ask you a couple of questions.
Yes.
Financially, where are we at in relation to our borrowing capacity? But, you know, maybe, you know, we can't do, you know, maybe a lift station and another water project, all went blank.
Borrowing, our borrowing capacity is two different kind of areas. And I thought I did, I don't turn on limits, I'm here somewhere. Um, as you know, or as, as we prepare for any of these events, we can always issue revenue bonds. There's no limit to that. That is what is tied to our sewer and water rates. So if it came down to it and we had to do another lift station, we could do that financially through revenue bonds as opposed to debt that would apply to our debt limit.
What's your conclusion phase two of the current one?
Phase two is something that we need to plan for. Yeah, that was something we started seven, eight years ago, we did not ever plan for, so you're right. Um, our debt capacity is about 4.4 million. We have out there in geo-debt around a million eight. It goes down every year through make payments, and we haven't taken on any more geo-debt. So we've got about three million that we could borrow if we needed to. Um, if you're thinking down the road of a fire station or, um, you know, like any major road repair that couldn't be done as a revenue bond, that is what you'd want to save your debt capacity for. Did I answer your question? Okay.
Because if we are right up against the limit, you know, throwing a big project out there didn't make sense, so I just.
Right, and I mean, if you want, my honest opinion, revenue debt is, is high. We have a lot of revenue debt. We have the revenue to cover it, um, but we are going to have to increase water rates if we do, uh, Water Main Project Four. Uh, we will probably have to decrease water rates a little more higher for water, for our Project Three, because we haven't taken on that debt yet. Um, it will be phased as a revenue bond, meaning we can tie it to our water funds. But that is something that, you know, if we could pay down instead of taking on as much debt, that's something to keep in mind. The less money we spend in different departments and different areas is more money we have to pay down debt or to do a water project. And I just hope the boys do my boy, but. But these are kind of the things I want, I need to know. If you guys are, you know, strong on getting that fourth Water Main Project done in a year, I'm, budget-wise, I'm thinking it's gonna be two years before we can get to it. But if you're wanting that done short-term, that would be one of your main short-term goals. Um, Project Three is already on the books for, to be done this spring. So that's.
So you don't want our green list?
I want future dreams, yes, I do.
I always say water, streets, and sewer, that's it. And anything else we can do after that's a bonus.
But I, I want to know what you want to do after that.
Okay.
So I do need to know some future thoughts, future dreams. Um, because I can set up different things and do things differently budget-wise, depending upon what you guys like. And like I said, this is the starting phase. After the election, we'll do this again in December with our new officers invited so that they could kind of come in and put their thoughts to paper before we actually start budgeting. And take your time, think about it. The Brett's got a book going over here.
Something like you ever talked about.
No, you've talked some, but some of the long-term ones, we should start getting set up and getting in place. I mean, the lift station took about eight years to go from start to completion and, um, maybe eight years ago, if things had been planned a little differently, we wouldn't have had to have such a huge sewer increase. I know, we're kind of, kind of tight quarters here. Have decided where to put it?
No, I'm creating somebody else's.
Oh, did they have a good one? That's.
A lot of space down.
I know, they're the full, they're the full stick sticky notes, so they're a little.
They're still just stuck at the top of mine, because I didn't even think about it.
There's another.
Or somewhere. I feel like they're all around me, my chairs is gonna go down.
So I need to have, I need to have the chairs checked out?
My screws keep falling out.
I think a couple of days ago, I think there were another one.
Did you all have different colors?
And I don't remember because who had what color, so I'm not analyzing. So I, I didn't, I didn't note that this year, so.
It was blue, I seen it. Better is blue.
Oh, orange ones are the right.
I don't think that's the right or wrong.
I don't know if I'm in my right timeframe always.
Yeah, there were some of them I almost stuck between two of them.
I don't know.
No, I'm just gonna highlight. So on immediate goals, we've got water, streets, and sewer. Um, pardon my writing, I am a lefty. Um, continue water distribution systems. We've got Center Avenue beautification. Beauty is on it, right? And sidewalks and lamps, I'll put sidewalks as a separate one, because that, I think, is a, can be considered separate from. Um, audio for the council chambers, you want just audio, or are you wanting audio and video?
Yes.
Improvement. For all those who.
And then continued park programming. So that is what we have as our immediate goals. So immediate goals would be what we're gonna finish out this budget cycle with. And as you know, none of those, well, part of park programs are in our budget right now. So you would need to decide if you're gonna, you know, rearrange some funds a little bit, um, because this is what we have in our budget right now. Short-term goals.
Actually, on the immediate, my first one, it wasn't Center Avenue, it was cemetery beautification.
Oh, cemetery, sorry, I read center. Cemetery beaut.
Big change there.
All right, short-term, we've got sidewalks and Center Avenue. Is that painting Center Avenue or beautification?
Beautification and the repairs of the sidewalks from the trees.
Um, trees added, so I'm gonna put trees with the sidewalk. Or with the Center Avenue beautification. Again, we've got water, sewer, and streets. And.
When we talk sidewalks on both of those pages, whoever wrote those.
This says sidewalk repairs, I take that to being everywhere?
Yes. Talking everywhere. I was talking center.
I think y'all looped those in so that people understand we're concerned about sidewalks on Center, it's like over here too.
You want just sidewalks on Center?
Well, you have Center Avenue beauty and sidewalks, just put a circle, those two are the same thing.
These two are connected, these two are connected. Uh, we've got, what was it? New board beautification. What's a new board?
Because we don't really have, just.
Oh, you want a, a committee or a group?
Right.
Gotcha.
Get it, get it established and get a chair going and that type of thing.
For the beautification.
That should be immediate, actually. That should have been immediate, I'm sorry.
Yeah, we could put that over there on the immediate one. Um, also, short-term, we've got fire station. We got phase two deer run. You guys remember, that's the next step in the sewer collection system out there. We have to take out all the wrinkles and connect all the deer run houses directly to sewer. Um, water project fire station, we have two for fire station and another Center Avenue. Long-term, we've got streets, which is what I mean, I'm assuming road repairs. Senior living, which we do have an issue with in town here. Again, water, sewer, and streets. And a lot of long-term. Uh, new fire department safety building. New fire station, new public safety building, bike trail. Uh, rec center. I don't want. Center is street light decorations, Center Avenue beautification. How about we leave those under short-term right now, since we've got that a couple places. Phase three of water, phase three of water will be done immediate, yeah. Uh, another fire station, new independent community development.
Industrial.
Industrial.
Commercial. Which is really water, streets, and sewer again.
Yeah, you listed that again. Development. And audiovisual council, I'll leave that under, is that short-term? No, long-term? I'll put that in. Audio and visual. If you're gonna be able to read by handwriting there. Future dreams, extending water and sewer. We do have some sites out there that if we could extend water and sewer too, we'd get some development. Future dreams is a bike trail. Um, Center Street extension. Is that extending it south or north or south? Beautified cotton from I-80. It already goes south. Am I being heckled back there?
Yeah.
Sounds like I'm being heckled. And we have the rec center. And have the correction facility build their own water tower. Okay, now what I want you to do, who has a writing implement? I have three highlighters and a marker.
I need more highlighters.
Yeah, I need a marker or something for each of them, some type of highlighter or something that they can write with. And I want you to list. I want each of you to go up on each of the pages and put the two most important items for you. Yep, just check mark or star, put our one or two, if one's most important, second's most important. Remember, immediate is what we will have done by the end of this June. Short-term is what we will start in June and have done by July of, June of 2023. Long-term is five years out from 2023. Future dreams is more than five years out from 2023. Okay? So, mark two items up there on each page that you would like to see done, you think is most important. So now, sit down and get out of your way.
Can that board for beautification, boy, can I just be a, because that's not gonna be a dollar value.
That I kind of moved over to the immediate, because we could, we could devote. Two on each page and count the board beautification as immediate.
And right now, people's names, so we don't.
We have got different markers.
Did Ronnie know what color she gave you?
She threw a pile of them and asked me to put here.
I did.
Short-term is next budget cycle, so starting in, um, July 1st through next June, so eighteen, twelve, eighteen months out. I know, most people don't think 2023 is short-term, but that's short-term for budgeting.
You guys are probably looking at grants for like 2027 by now.
Yeah, with the constant bike trail, that's future dream. If you want any money from the state, you're five years at least, yeah, if you can get it right now.
When I was looking at it, when I first got it, well, there's only four years left in the world, but this is like five years away. You're five years now.
If you're lucky. But that's how we almost missed out on the, we have a new grant.
Monroe and Prairie City are starting to expand Blue Bike Trails this way. Hopefully, you know, it'd be awesome if someday we could tie it in the cold facts and then. You sure? Yes.
Yeah.
I'll sign you a couple of guys up there.
It'd be nice if there was like a Jasper County thing, like there was for Ebbett. But in Jasper County, so they could help find the funds and stuff.
It's nice to have trillions, you should put that on your.
Come on, my future dream.
Thank you.
Thank you. And if you come up with another, you know, you can add things to the YouTube.
And if you come up with another, you know, you can add things to the YouTube.
Well, the one in, that we'll do in December with the newly elected, I've got a different format we're gonna use. We're gonna get more down into the department level so I can kinda have an idea of where you want, you know, general fund money on. Departments and that kinda stuff. Alright, so just to summarize, and these are what I'll, we'll kind of start the budget process with this year. Um, it looks like for our immediate goals is water is still our number one goal in finishing up the water project. Um, Center Avenue beautification sidewalks on Center, got two votes. Uh, audio and visual for council got two votes and beautifying the cemetery got one vote. Um, short-term goals, which is what we will be looking to put into the budget for next year. Um, still water's a priority, looks like the second priority is Center Avenue's trees on Center and fixing the sidewalks. And then, uh, Deer Run Phase Two got one vote, the fire station got a vote.
Well, sewer, you got three different, cause you kinda put it in sewer twice.
Well, cause LeBron listed sewer all the time.
Me, water, streets, and sewer.
Yeah, water, streets, and sewer.
It's one subject.
One subject.
Go without, go without them and then see what the priority is.
Not to throw you under the bus here.
I know, that's right.
Um, long-term, it looks like the fire station got one, two, three, four, five, six votes, or five votes for long-term project. Uh, senior living got two votes, water still got two votes, and new industrial and commercial development got one vote. Future dreams, we're pretty much everything up there got a vote, rec center got three votes, uh, extending sewer and water got three votes. Bike trail got three votes and extending Center Avenue got two, or one vote, I've seen the number two and they get two votes. Um, so I will print this all up for you guys and send it out to you so we can keep it in mind as we enter the budget. This is kinda what you guys thought your priorities were. So let's see if we budget in line with what, where we want our money to go. Um, not just for any wild hair that, that we think of, so we'll try to stay on task with where we want our money to go. Does anybody wanna discuss anything up there or anything they see?
It's a pretty good start. It's pretty accurate, too.
Okay. I thought we're doing pretty well on the roads. I, I don't wanna forget about the roads, allow them to go to pieces again.
Yeah.
But.
Um, I think.
For short-term, I think we're sitting pretty well.
Center Avenue from the railroad on south is getting pretty rough.
I thought that was just redone.
We did Center Avenue from the railroad in, Polk County did a few sponges on it. But they didn't come all the way into the railroad. Um, so if you take a drive on it, you can kinda tell, um, Mill may need addressed.
Mill's got some serious dips in it.
Yeah. Um, and then, you know, Sixth Avenue northeast will be immediate, because that'll be once our project's done. Vine by the cemetery is not very well drivable. Um, so there's some, there's some small projects, but cotton and Mill would be huge, or Center and Mill would be huge projects.
Well, when you build that new Center Street south, you've been.
That must be what she meant the first one.
Yeah. Any other comments, any thing anybody sees that they wanna change or? Uh.
I know I've had a couple folks out in Deer Run that are really looking forward to us doing second phase two. They really wanna hook up to the sewer system because they wanna do different things in their yard, they just wanna know what.
Yes. Cause right now, they can't do anything in their backyards until we.
Yeah, it's like my yard's been for two years.
Yep, so, yep, that is, um, you know, short-term, it's obviously something we can't do right now. And it's gonna take some buzz. I go, what?
We'll work that out, there we got a handout, that is. Those people survive combat. That's unbelievable.
Alright, that is all I have on strategic planning unless anyone wants to mention anything else. I said it'd be a short one.
Bike?
Alright. Three hundred seventeen calls for this year. I'll start with walking tacos, walking tacos went very well, thanks for everybody coming up and eating with us. Along with that water bikes, that was a lot of fun too. Um, if you were there, I did not plan on getting that wet. But it was a good time. Looking forward to that next year. Uh, Thomas Mitchell Days as a whole, fire department related, um, it was very quiet. Uh, there was, uh, one, one issue at the park, um, but that was a minor event that was taken care of. Car crash, went awesome, had a lot of fun. Hopefully it disappeared here pretty soon, I got a phone call yesterday that kids were downplaying those, so. If you're driving around, you see them down there, they're not supposed to be playing with the cars. October twenty-third, our home house, so make sure everybody gets that on your calendar. It's gonna be a little bigger this year, so we're pretty excited about that. And while you have your calendar out, over November, we got chili supper coming up. A week before Thanksgiving, so. As of right now, it's gonna be at the school, um, unless COVID changes, everybody's fine. And then we'll let you know how we're gonna handle that, so. That's what I have.
Personally, thank you for hiring the reserve and my full-time guy here. I'm ready to throw him his own car already, but we're going to take right steps on that. Uh, we are at sixty-three calls so far for September, I don't have the actual breakdown of what is what. Um, Thomas Mitchell Days for us went well, that Friday night, we did our traditional bike rodeo, which I believe moving it to the park helped with the numbers on that, we actually had a lot of kids riding that, that trail there. Our ops, of course, uh, our new reserve, Sean, actually ran that for us. We handed out, uh, helmets again this year, I believe we handed twelve or thirteen of them out, so that was a lot more than prior years before, so that was a good thing. Assisted with the bike parade. That night, uh, we also got to do the drunk driving with goggles on the golf par. Uh, I can say we did not crash a cart, but we killed a lot of cones. I think, uh, a lot of education and eye openings happened with the, the teams that participated in that, so that's something we're looking forward to bringing back again next year. Uh, Saturday, parade went well, I was talking to Dean and we're looking at getting different signages for Center Avenue with the removal of the trees. It kinda cuts down on how many, you know, no parking signs and, and stuff like that, and it kinda hides them because I have to put them on a pole. So we're gonna look at different signages for it, and I have a feeling it's gonna stay down at the park, so I've been working with Ronnie. We may actually get like some form of a permitted sign that we can just flop up and block down for those events. Uh, outside of that, for us, Thomas Mitchell Days ran very well. I think it was a good time.
Um, I give you guys, it's I, or it's L-I-H-W-A-P, which is a new program that's coming out with some of the funds from, that we're getting from like the COVID relief and stuff. This is gonna be based on your income for your house. It's for anybody that lives in city limits, they would apply for the voucher, the check would come directly to us. It's for, to avoid water shut-off, it's to pay your bill if you're behind, if you need help, so that you don't have to pay your delinquent fees. We don't have a start date on that yet, but that's just some literature on it, once I have a start date, then I'll get it, start pushing it out to the public, but I don't wanna not be able to answer questions. Other than that, I just posted the coloring contest for the fire association. Um, but they can pick them up and drop them off here. And while you guys are talking about money, we talked about, uh, we, how we needed two more fire sirens in town, emergency alert sirens. Polk County got back to me, they are more than happy to give me information, but no money. So, I've been looking at grants, I found a couple sidewalk grants while I was looking, um, just stumbled across those. That would mainly get to like on Fourth Street where there's spots where there's no sidewalk. On Elm where there's spots where there's no sidewalk, it's called a safe rock to school grant. So they would pay to put sidewalks in that are made rocks to the school, so that's something, that grant doesn't open for another month or two though. Um, but I'm not finding anything for sirens. And with two hundred fifty to three hundred houses going in a deer run and the house is already there, barely able to hear, I think that's something that we really need to remember when we're talking about, while we're gonna put money.
Paul couldn't be here tonight, Jeffrey was, you're supposed to talk in Paul's place at all? Or do you, did he just say show up? I don't wanna put you on spot.
Oh, I can talk, um, we're actually still experimenting with our new hider and he's going forty. Um, I've been working with him for the last week and, uh, tomorrow he jumps on board with Paul for his exercise with him, so he's got pretty much the basics down and he, he's been a hard worker and, uh, today we actually started with our shop cleanup. So we will be trimming our own fences, um, and the new hider actually did hang up, uh, some missing portions of fence and, um, besides that, I think that's it.
Do they have any plan on fixing the gate down there?
Sorry, you're gonna get Jeff.
Our gate is, yeah. Um, our gate is actually currently operable, we can do not close it this time for the operation for.
We tried to close it last week when we put the truck back down there and it's, that's not what I'd call operable. It was off, off the wheels.
I will have to check on it again.
Okay.
Actually, we did work with it today and it was covered with, I will take, I will check on it.
Thank you.
You gotta kick the right corner three feet out.
I'm working with Paul too to get some security cameras at the shop, uh, the shop, the public workshop, the one you're talking about with the gate. That one has wifi, so it's easy to hook cameras on that. We had media come out last week at the sewer plant to try to see if they can run anything to it, cause two years ago they told us no. And they should be coming out to look at the water plant and let us know if they can get something on that, cause it'd be nice to have some sort of security camera out.
And maybe the wells.
Yeah, I don't know that we're getting media come out.
I don't know what you might have to use that like service.
But yeah, that is in the works.
Okay. Bill?
Uh, last week I attended the Metro Waste Authority meeting and, uh, they're on schedule to open the new recycling plant in Urban, Urban Dela Quaid, it's, it's all kind of together out there. And, uh, in November.
Andrew?
I don't have any.
Yeah.
I just wanna say, huge awesome job to everybody who's part of the Thomas Mitchell Days, from the fire association to the police department, to the citizens. I mean, it, it was fun, the food was great, the community aspect was better, so thanks everybody who made it out and everybody who put it together.
Will Bray?
Uh, no.
Amy?
Um, yeah, I've had some late communication this afternoon with Jeremy, our engineer with EK, on this culvert repair under Sixth Street. Yeah, don't frown yet, it's, it's not gonna use. Basically, what Synergy is telling him is that they cannot get a box culvert in until November or December. Um, Jeremy's email just rated to you, said for the Deer Run project, we had proposed replacing the existing culvert under Sixth Street with a six-by-four box culvert. Per Synergy, uh, cast-in-place box culvert cannot be put in until November or December, supposedly due to material shortages. In lieu of that, they're suggesting a seventeen-foot circular round concrete pipe instead. That would supposedly allow them to address the culvert replacement work still in October. Based on alignment of the creek, he is recommending that the box culvert is a better solution. But then Synergy won't be able to work on it until November or December, which is past their October deadline that we had extended them last May. Uh, let's see, they, he goes on to say, uh, he doesn't think the scheduling issue is our fault, it's their fault, has nothing to do with anything that by the city. He's looking for our thoughts, he thinks the shit city should stick with the box, box culvert. Uh, pushing the culvert work past the October deadline. He feels the extension that was granted earlier this year provided a reasonable amount of time for the project to get completed. I asked him a few questions, do you guys, do you guys have questions, cause I didn't understand everything he was saying. Um, I asked him if we stick with the box, box culvert, the road would be completed by early December. His response was not sure, Synergy can't guarantee it yet. Um, or even potentially put it in writing, restoring the roadway with PCC is temperature dependent. And if the weather is mild, it can be done, but if things cool down faster, it might not be. Um, and keep in mind that HMA plans closed down towards the end of November. Um, I asked him what are, are, what's our ramifications cost-wise, what are our stats, can, is Synergy can be penalized in any way for missing the deadline? He said there's gonna be no direct cost to the city because, I mean, not give paying them any extra. Um, but Synergy, if Synergy doesn't get an extension, they could be subject to liquidated damages, which we would have to go to court. Um, it's worth noting that damages cannot be punitive, meaning the city can only really charge and recoup costs that were incurred as a result of them meeting, not meeting their deadline, which there's no forecasted costs incurred. Um, so they really cannot be punished for missing the deadline. The advantage to the city for just not arbitrarily granting an extension is that it stays a priority for Synergy. I asked him what's the difference between HMA or concrete, cause I don't know. He said PCC is more durable surface and should last longer. I asked why he prefers the box culvert over the concrete pipe and he said with the box culvert, there, cause that's where the creek is. He said we're better, we're able to better route the flow. We have bends at the end of the box culvert that allows us to better transition into the creek. We would not have that with a straight pipe and achieve, achieve something similar, we would likely need to require Synergy to pour some head walls, which would still need to be designed, and there's no guarantee they'd be able to get the necessary rebar, as it seems they're already having issues with ordering supplies. He said no action was needed tonight, cause I said we could deem this an emergency and throw this on the agenda at the last minute. Um, he said, cause Synergy still has time, and he thinks Synergy should be the one making a case for an extension. And that's where they left it. Like I said, this was at four o'clock afternoon, so there hasn't been a lot of looking into it. Um, so it looks like we either have to change and allow them to go with the concrete pipe so we can get the road done by October. Or hope that if we demand they put in the box culvert as it was contracted that they do, it would be November, December. November, December always turns into January, but, but it could be November, December before they get it in. Um, you know, he's pretty pioed because he doesn't think they ordered it when they should have ordered it. So what are our thoughts?
We need to fix it correctly like engineers.
We need to do the box.
So that means it could still be spring then, before they could come back and fix the road.
I know, that's right.
If they want an extension, they can come up here and stand up there and ask for it.
I suppose there's a goal. If we can't fix them, they'll permanently fix the road there until spring. I guess the question, if you're back and asking, is there a way to have Synergy somehow do a better temporary fix than, than us trying to pour gravel in the holes and it keeps, cause it's only, cause it's only gonna get worse during the winter.
That's fun to be good with, we had to repair the road more in the meantime.
Yeah, I can share it.
Just a few years ago because this is necessary, but, I mean, there's not a lot we can do to slap them on the wrist, but I hope that you guys remember this the next time I do a project.
The, uh, to me, that box is much more important, just we've had literally decades, we've had problems with that road.
Yeah, Jeremy's not wanting to back, back down from the box culvert requirement.
But that box culvert on a regular basis. But that box culvert on a regular basis takes much more water at a slower rate than the circular. And then you're like, how the hell do you know that?
And what does that mean?
A developing South Moine taught me that, because they just went through this a couple of years ago. And the box is much more important.
Okay. So I will visit with Jeremy and Paige at Synergy and we will go from there. I mean, basically, you're saying if we want to go with the box culvert, we're giving them an extension.
Yeah.
Because that means, and we will discuss what happens if we repair the road here in October on our own and.
Can they come to the next meeting though and be the ones to request and answer questions like, when did you order it? Why did you wait to order it?
Yeah, I will ask that room.
Like I said, I'll have to talk to them.
Make sure Ronnie's here.
Alright, that's all I have on that topic. Anybody else want to? Okay. Um, other thing I have on the menu is I put in a copy of what I am looking at for the Citizens Academy. Um, this is kind of my rough draft. The dates are every other Thursday, starting October twenty-first, skipping three weeks in December and ending up in January twentieth. Proposed boards or commissions or people on these certain nights, I haven't confirmed with everyone. I know the library did not want to do the first one, so I talked to the library board. The other boards, I will be discussing them with. Do you guys have any comments, any questions? Or is this something that I'm okay to go forward with?
I think it's a great idea.
I like this. Are we going to, if we attend and take a seat or can we?
You would attend as a participant, unless I have, because I don't, yeah, you would, you'd be able to attend as a participant? That way you could fully participate without it being a council meeting?
Okay. I just wanted to make sure we don't take someone's seat either.
No, and I mean, the, the, what did I limit it to, twenty? You know, if, if we're getting there, you know, we can fit more than twenty in here. I just didn't want a big, huge class. You know, some nights it is pretty easy to get more in. Public safety, I think Derek wants to meet over at the police and the fire station, so we'll meet over there that night, and they have a big meeting room too. So we'd be able to accommodate what, what we need. We'll just kind of see how the registrations come in and we'll open there.
Kind of be nice to do like the library, maybe at the library and then.
Which would be good, but we're also doing Park and Rec that night.
Huh?
We're also doing Park and Rec that night.
You don't work yourself out.
Yep. Yep, we'll.
I think it's a really good idea.
I think whenever you say that, you make more work for you.
I just hope we have people show up.
That's, yeah, I, I.
And that would be great.
The reason I put the boards on in November is because we were looking for people that will want to fill those boards. And there are seats coming up in December that the new mayor will be having to appoint. And if we get people to attend these classes and realize, oh, they, this sounds like a fun thing I can do, because everything working with the government is fun, so.
Because it's really.
We can all have fun doing it.
It's really fun. That's the best thing ever.
Okay, so I will get this ready to go and get that sent out. Uh, Park and Rec is supposed to meet tomorrow night, but they have not given me an agenda yet, so I'm, I don't know if they're meeting or not. If they are, it's gotta be after.
It, it airing isn't feeling great, so we're.
Okay, good, because you can't meet tomorrow night, because you wouldn't meet the twenty-four hour notice. Okay. Um, September twenty-third, Ronnie and I have a meeting, a pre-construction meeting for the flat three, the two hundred and sixty-eight homes going on north of town. So we'll have our first sit-down with the developer and the engineer to discuss the construction. Next Monday is library board meeting. And I think that's all I have on my schedule.
That's all?
Well, we had Thomas Mitchell Days. I kind of was busy getting that stuff going.
I'm kind of like Nick and, and I am on the part of the committee for Thomas Mitchell Days and, you know, thanks to the public works guys and the PD, you know, full-timers and the reserves and the
Volunteers.
Volunteers for being there. You know, I, I'm pretty sure that we can call Thomas Mitchell Days a huge success. If you weren't in park Friday night for the dinner, we started serving shortly after five o'clock and the line didn't break till probably at least quarter after seven. Cameras was working next to me and I said I was gonna file a complaint for my union stewardess. And when you're seventy-plus standing for two hours making sandwiches, uh, works on you. Great, I thought that really well Saturday. Legion had a huge crowd. Unfortunately, about fifty of them showed up about nine o'clock after the run was over. Was giving the police department a run for their money, but we got through that okay. And there's lots of, lots of, lots of people in the park if you weren't there after the parade was over. And I think everybody had a really good time.
Yeah, my booth did ninety pumpkins and the kids come in and decorate them and we went through all the pumpkins I didn't think I would.
That's awesome.
I know Memphis Church got rid of all the.
I was hoping to have leftover pumpkins, and we didn't have any leftover pumpkins.
But, uh, probably the highlight of the day, maybe, is when the pig escaped from the wall field in the goose pig contest. Everybody was down, I suppose, probably a hundred people down there. And probably, if there was a hundred people, it was probably ninety-seven of us laughing. And the other three that were trying to figure out how we're gonna catch this darn pig probably weren't laughing exactly. Note for next year, be sure to check all the fetters and that. So anyways, but thank you to everybody in the community that was part of it, whether you worked or whether you just came and had your time. And I'm like you, Derek, I'm pretty sure it's probably going back to the park this year, or next year. And we probably couldn't have ordered two better days of weather.
Oh.
Back-to-back than, than we had this year. Because usually you get one day that's not very good or it's pretty hot or whatever, but, uh, we just had super weather this year for that.
We do need to schedule the street cleaner, just so we know the date. Because I don't like kids having to pick up rocks when they're trying to pick up candy.
No.
There's a lot of rocks in front of my house and Dale told me not to go out sweeping the streets.
But, uh, so.
I, I have a board. Our thing is a board.
And there's always room on that committee for people to volunteer to help out and do something, whatever it is. But, uh, probably along with January, when we'll, we'll start to get together again and plan next year's festivities. And I think that's all I have. If anybody in the audience would like to address the council. So I'm motion to adjourn.
So move. Second.
Move in a second, please, turn. All the favors, say aye.
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 Thank you, everyone.
Thank you, Mr. Ryan.
Okay.
Oh, come on. Mike, you got Pail?